And welcome, ladies and— oops, I turned my button on myself. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting this April 2nd. I call to order the meeting and ask Mr. Krupp to take the roll call.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. We are joined this morning with County Council, Stephen Madcor, and also Mary Rathke, your clerk of the board. I'll start the roll call. Commissioner Bernard, here. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Ledlow?
Here. You all please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance— there's no comma after nation.
[laughing] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that we will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item, and I'd like to introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner, Mr. Paul Reynolds, at the far end here. Welcome, Paul, again.
Thank you.
And so, I'll ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. There's one item, approval of resolution number 1909, Housing Authority Fiscal Year, 2016 Annual and Five-Year Plan.
All right. Do Commissioners want to pull that one, or can they entertain a motion?
Oh, I approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Reynolds, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? All right, Mary, the poll.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
Aye. Passes six-zero. We will now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming today.
Good thing you're paid by the hour.
Yeah.
[laughing]
And it should be known, he was just kidding, because Paul volunteers his time at his requirement that we have somebody on that board who actually is in said housing. So, we appreciate Paul making his way here every time and meeting here with us. So, the next—we're going to have a presentation, Mr. Krupp.
Yes, we are, Mr. Chair. Of course, April is National County Government Month, and we have a presentation about that. I'm going to invite Mr. Tim Hyder from our Public and Government Affairs Department up to the front to give the presentation.
Thank you, Don. Good morning, Commissioners. Chair Ledlow. I am Tim Hyder from Public and Government Affairs, and as Don said, I am here to discuss with you this morning that April is National County Government Month. It's a program supported by the National Association of Counties, an association many of you are familiar with. The goal is to raise public awareness and understanding of the roles and responsibilities of county government in the lives of all Americans. So, I'd like to start off by showing you a video entitled "Why Counties Matter." This video was produced by NACO.
Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are, you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways, keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
So, as you can see, this national campaign allows Clackamas County to highlight how well we work, to keep our communities safe, our residents healthy, our roads strong, our water clean, and our region attractive. Throughout April, Public and Government Affairs will demonstrate how the county improves residents' lives through social media channels and the county website, in keeping with NACO's theme, keeping Clackamas County moving. Throughout this outreach, we will share details of Clackamas County's infrastructure and transportation with the public. As you can see from the infographic, which has been posted on the county website, we've—most residents probably are unaware that Water and Environment Services produce more than $6 billion—$6 billion gallons of clean water every year, or that Clackamas County Health Centers cared for more than 22,000 people last year alone, or that the county maintains 1,400 miles of roads and 180 bridges, and that 180,000 visitors enjoyed the county parks each year. At your April 30th business meeting, the last day of the campaign, I will be back to you to introduce to you county employees who work daily to build and maintain our infrastructure, and at that time, you'll see a Clackamas County-specific video showcasing the many great services our county performs for our residents and the public. Thank you for taking the time today to acknowledge the great work that our counties do.
Thank you. And so, I assume that this video, there'll be a link on our front page of our website, at least for a period of time.
It is. It's already linked.
Commissioner Bernard?
I noticed that forests aren't even mentioned in any of this, so hopefully, the county video does talk about our forests. Not only the forests around home, but state, federal forests in the county.
Thank you.
Excellent stuff. So, we look forward to your appearance again, and thank you for that. The video was great. Commissioner Schrader?
Just wanted to make a comment about thanking you for that, and I have just got an email from, actually, the National Association of Counties, and Daria Daniel, who is the Associate Legislative Director of the National Association of Counties, she is—works with us on economic and community development, is meeting with our own Senator Merkley today, and she will be discussing the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, because the other thing, and appropriations for 2016, the other things that counties are directly involved in, the education piece, of helping people find jobs and moving them to—into prosperity, working with businesses, and we are not only active at the local level with that, we also have a national arm through the National Association. So, thanks.
All right. Thanks again, Tim. And now, we have Citizens Communication. I have two cards, and I will say to both of the people who are going to testify, please do not talk about the public hearing. If you want to speak about marijuana and the ordinance we're about to enact, then please save that for the public—the public hearing portion. So, those two people under Citizens Communication are Mariana Moore and Les Poole.
Good morning, Mariana Moore. It's nice to be back. Been watching things and looking at what's going on, and part of, of course, is what you're looking at with the roads fees and all these things, and—the budget. And I'm wondering if we're going to be able to see the budget, the proposed budget, soon. And one of the things that I'm always curious about is how much of that is salaries and where those salaries are paid, and especially when we're talking about the roads, because I'm sure you have a big staff, and I'm wondering what they do all through the winter. They come spring, they get out all their trucks, and they're ready to roll, but I'm wondering is—how cost-effective all of these things are in the budget, and I'd like to see it. And one of the other things that Tudy had mentioned was the bicycles, and I'm really concerned about the bicycles, because they demand a lot, and as you do these roads and things, you have to put in bike lanes and all these things for them, and they're not paying anything towards the maintenance of these things. And I think it's time that the bicyclists take their share of the costs. And so, that's the main things that I wanted to mention this morning. Thank you.
First of all, give me that date again, Don, May, what?
May 26th.
May 26th, we'll have our first budget meeting. We had a quarterly meeting yesterday, but that will be the first time you'll be able to see the proposed budget. And to answer real briefly, they work all winter long, because there's still a lot to do, you know? The roads need their work, especially around the summertime, but remember that these people are also responsible for guardrails, signage, vegetation clearing, ditches, and don't forget, everybody out there that's listening, that—and we try to get this information out at a road—the road ahead.us. But remember, avalorm or property taxes cannot be used for roads. And so, that is an income from a variety of other methods, mainly gas tax revenue, vehicle weight miles to truck—trucks, et cetera. So, just so you know that.
Yeah. In that regard, you say they can't be used for roads, but you're paying for all the staff during this time, right?
Yeah.
Out of the regular budget.
No. No. That staff, again, is paid from revenue, from gasoline tax, from vehicle registration—
From that department.
—from weight miles. That's not out of a general fund or property taxes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Mary—Marianne, thanks for coming. So, are you telling me that you would support an additional tax for roads if bicycle registration was included?
Yes.
Would you vote positively for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Poole?
Good morning. Interesting subject she just brought up, and obviously, the caveat or the asterisk about her yes vote would be, where is the proposal? What will it be? What will—you know? And I mentioned the last time I was here that there's—a menu of options, and it needs to be refined. Otherwise, it'll be too complex, and we all know what happens when something seems complex, especially to the voter. They shy away, they don't vote, or they vote no. And I think that's exactly the lesson we learned from the Parks Deal, as it was called. The public really doesn't need so much deal-making. When you go to Salem, they talk about all the deals. I see a lot more bad deals than good deals. What we need is leadership, fiscal restraint, and accountability, and as we just saw in the earlier presentation, we need to move the county forward. Part of moving the county forward is obviously taking care of the roads, and the sooner we get some clarity about how that's going to be addressed, the better. Some citizens may know that right now, at the legislature, there's an additional tax being proposed, and some type of a gas tax or a gas tax increase that would be distributed to counties. And this—this was born from the fiasco in Portland, where the mayor and Commissioner Novick tried to backdoor a sizable road fee into the city of Portland and wouldn't let anyone vote on it. It was exposed that they were being pretty—pretty careless. Pretty soon, there was a recall launched on them, and since that time, they basically—let me cite a child's game. They played Ring Around the Rosie for months, wasted so much time and money. Just go online in Oregon Live and look at the plethora of options and the nonsense that's gone on in Portland. We can't have that happen here. And now, Portland has gone to the state and said, "Raise a gas tax for us." Well, maybe that might help us in the short term here, but again, this thing's being kicked around. The road situation has been kicked around since 1995 in this county, and as I said last time I spoke, you folks inherited the mess, but you need to take care of it. We need to get serious about, what are we going to do? And are we going to put something in front of the voters that they're going to approve? If we don't do that, we're dead in the water, and the two minutes that I'm spending now will pale—will pale to the millions that are being wasted and lost. Thank you for your time.
Les, you weren't here on Tuesday, but did you listen in on our Tuesday policy sessions? If you would've, you would've known that this isn't being kicked down—the again, down the road. We have been working on this for really several years. We did inherit a lot, and the point of the matter is, is we did discuss funding options, and we have narrowed that considerably from the start, and we're leaning towards a particular one although—or two, but we have not decided on that as of this time. But we will appropriately take care of that with my goal, is to put on the November ballot of this year. So, I think we're shooting for that. I think it'll be a fair and just allotment of where we get the money, and so, I think we're doing real well on that. Commissioner Savis?
Well, this is probably one of those other complex issues, and I think how we message is going to be really important. And so, I know—I says—I don't know if one of the people in the audience is going to speak, but I know that what he's presented to me before is something I do want to just clarify, and that is that it is true that avalorm taxes cannot be used for roads. However, there are some of the expenditures that—the—that are now paid for with gas tax dollars that could be paid for with avalorm taxes. So, there—I think we identified that last year to the tune of about $4.5 million that we could. So, the law stands, the law's correct, but there are some activities that we can do, so we can backfill some of that cost or offset that, and, you know, the commitment we made, I think, last year was $500,000 of budget towards asphalt only, not towards any other expenditure, but take $500 of general fund revenue to offset some of those fees. So, the complexity is always going to be there, unfortunately. It seems the nature of our business that is complex, but when you hear of—when you hear that, just bear in mind that up to $4.5 million could be, and I think that would be a good faith effort to the voters that I spoke to before.
Thank you. And again, I—I don't come to you as a single citizen. I'm out in the community a lot, as you know. I get lots of input, so I try to bring a message that isn't just, "Oh, this is what Les thinks." Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I—I think part of the confusion is probably due to the—the comment that, you know, what brush removal may not be pavement. Tree removal, barricades, signs, but they are all road-dependent, or roads are dependent on them, ditches. So, yes, you could supplement that through the general fund, but then you've got to think, where are we going to take it away from? But those are all still key to preserv—life safety issues on roads. So, it only makes sense that road funds pay for brush removal, ditch repair, signs, and all those things. So, I think that—I think that confuses the issue when you say that you could use avalorm tax to pay for brush removal, ditches, signs, and barricades, or whatever. The fact is, those are part of the roads. So, I'm concerned the message needs to be clear.
Thank you both.
I'd like to clarify something with Tudy. It sounded like she said, "If they included bikes, I would vote for the road thing." So, that's not what I would intend.
Well, will you?
Well, depends on what else is in your road fee, not just bikes.
Well, that's about the only way that we're going to get bicycles to pay is actually pass something in requirement and require it to happen. So, I don't know what—we can't just pass a bicycle fee in the county. It would have to be attached to something.
Thank you, Mariana.
Depends on what else—what else is attached to.
It always does, doesn't it? In everything we do. It's the details, is it not?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. That's the end of Citizens Communication, and now, Mr. Krupp, we have a public hearing.
We do, Mr. Chair. This is a public hearing to consider the first reading of an ordinance that would amend the Clackamas County Code to add requirements establishing time, place, and manner regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries and declaring an emergency. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Dan Chandler from County Administration to present to you the report. Also joining us is Nate Bauderman from County Council at Office.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Dan Chandler, Strategic Policy Administrator. As Administrator Krupp said, we're here to talk about an ordinance establishing time, place, and manner regulations for marijuana dispensaries. I want to first start with a little background. Really, the biggest reason we're here is Senate Bill 1531, which licensed—or set up a licensing program for medical marijuana dispensaries. It also clarified that counties have authority to adopt reasonable time, place, and manner regulations on medical marijuana dispensaries. The statute also set up a couple of setbacks and a few restrictions on dispensaries, and gave the Oregon Health Authority the ability to write further regulations. The League of Oregon Cities and Association of Oregon Counties, however, believe that cities and counties have additional authority to regulate on matters of county concern, including medical and recreational marijuana. However, the issue's not clear, the AOC and LOC have both asked the legislature to go ahead and clear that up, so that we don't spend years asking the courts to clear it up for us. The other real key factor that I think has changed the landscape, of course, is the passage of Measure 91, which will legalize recreational marijuana in the state of Oregon. You can see up on the screen that there are possession limits that are fairly generous: eight ounces of usable marijuana, four plants, a pound of solid homemade marijuana products, four and a half pounds of liquid homemade marijuana products. And people can possess outside of their household up to an ounce of usable marijuana. Measure 91 also sets up the ability to transfer marijuana, recreational marijuana, not for money, but to deliver to people without compensation. An ounce of homegrown marijuana, a pound of solid homemade marijuana products, and four and a half pounds of liquid homemade marijuana products. The measure prohibits consumption in public, but you can see that collectively, with the possession limits and the transfer limits, that in July of this year, I think the landscape is going to change in terms of people's ability to have marijuana in their homes, use it in their homes, and transfer it. Last spring, after the Board of Commissioners adopted a moratorium under Senate Bill 1531, they requested staff to go back and work on time, place, and manner regulations. We had the assistance of a number of folks in the public. I want to thank them. Many of them are here in the room. It was a lively—a lively discussion, ranging from sort of 30,000-foot issues about, you know, the use of medicine, marijuana discrimination, the fact that it's still illegal under federal law, but there was also some specific concerns. Access to medicine on the pro-dispensary side. There was concern about forcing users to the black market if the county was too restrictive. On the prevention side, there was concern about normalization, the effect that having a number of dispensaries would have on the perception among youth that the use of marijuana was a normal, regular, and sort of permissive thing in society. There were concerns about the neighborhood effects of proliferation. There was also concern expressed about the difficulty in enforcing impaired driving prohibitions, and how that might affect the time, place, and manner of medical marijuana dispensaries. I think it's also clear that many medical marijuana dispensaries, once they are allowed, will likely become recreational vendors. It's going to be difficult to close folks down next year, when the OLCC writes its— or finishes its regulations allowing recreational dispensaries. We just think it's fair to assume that any medical dispensary will likely become a recreational vendor at the end of the day. But if you look at many of these concerns, you can see a possibility that they may be overwhelmed under Measure 91. In other words, forcing users to the black market may be unnecessary with the generous possession limits and ability to transfer under Measure 91. Normalization, depending on what happens under Measure 91, may just happen in society anyway. So, many of those specific concerns, in our view, are going to be changed, and maybe even rendered irrelevant by Measure 91, depending upon what happens. So, we're really in a situation right now where there's substantial uncertainty. We've got two separate regulatory schemes, two separate regulatory agencies. We have OLCC rulemaking going on on recreational. We have legislative changes potentially in the works. Marijuana still remains illegal under federal law, and I want to note that, you know, non-enforcement guidance at the federal level is just that. It's guidance. It doesn't change the statute, and that guidance can be changed. There've been some federal guidance issued about when the feds may or may not prosecute marijuana, but again, it's just guidance. I know there's at least one case, and I believe two now pending in other states, on whether or not state recreational marijuana programs are preempted or violate the federal supremacy clause because marijuana remains illegal under federal law. And I say all of that to say, there is uncertainty out there about where we're going to be in a year. That uncertainty just led Columbia County to go ahead and extend its moratorium till late August. They're relying on what they believe to be their inherent authority to go ahead and extend the moratorium. Again, it's unclear whether or not that would stand a court challenge or not, but the uncertainties led them to do that. And I think from our perspective, anyway, the staff's perspective, we know it's easier to loosen restrictions than it is to tighten them later. So, I think we should look at this as an interim step, a first step, knowing that Measure 91 may change the landscape dramatically. So, whatever we do this month, again, we could loosen it up if it's not loosened up for us by the legislature or the OLCC. So, the ordinance in front of you chiefly deals with county setbacks between dispensaries 2,500 feet, 2,000 feet from schools, 1,500 feet from light rail transit stops, libraries, parks, treatment centers, adult foster care, 500 feet from licensed childcare facilities. There's a map. There's also a map up on the side of the room. This map is for informational purposes only. It's long experience would dictate, there's probably something that we missed in terms of use, that we'd create another circle on the maps. What you can see there in the dark, or magenta, are the areas that facilities would be allowed with the setbacks as we know them today. You'll note a change from earlier maps on McLaughlin Boulevard. They're about halfway up that county stretch of McLaughlin. There's a new area of magenta. One of the facilities shown on earlier maps has surrendered its license, and that used to be blocked out by the 2,500-foot setback. So, there's another—this is not—the laser's not going to show, but you can kind of see halfway up McLaughlin there. There's a new piece of magenta that wasn't there before. Other time, place, and manner regulations that are in the ordinance, we have hours of operation 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That was previously adopted by the Board in January, and the ordinance that relaxed the moratorium and grandfathered certain facilities. Disposal must be secure. Filtration must combine objectionable odors to the premises, and that there's no mobile vending, drive-through, or walk-through, which is probably prohibited by the state anyway, but it seemed to make sense to put it in our ordinance. Our ordinance currently says that these facilities must be inside the metro urban growth boundary. That means they would not be allowed in the rural commercial areas or exclusive farm use zones. I would note that Measure 1531 would allow these facilities pretty much everywhere that's not forest, as far as we can tell. So, they'd be allowed in EFU zones and everywhere else under the terms of 1531. Our view is that being inside the metro UGB makes—it makes it much easier to police the impacts of these. Our code enforcement folks would have better access, and also, these urban law enforcement levels provide a better DUII, impaired driving protection for—for the community. The rural commercial areas that would not be allowed, you're talking about toward the villages at Mount Hood— The rural commercial areas that would not be allowed, you're talking about towards the villages at Mount Hood, Malino, Colton, Boring, Beaver Creek. I wanna note some changes since the March tenth policy session, uh, and today. Again, the, the provision on mobile walk-through or drive-through vending was added since March. We've added, uh, that the rules will apply to all marijuana vending facilities, sort of in advance of what happens with recreational marijuana. Disposal must be secure. We've added a provision that says they must comply with, um, Oregon Health Authority requirements. That seems a little redundant, but it really protects us from a situation where someone would come in and say, "Well, I comply with the county ordinance. Go ahead and let me open up." And they may not comply with the OHA. So I typically don't like those cross-jurisdictional things, but think that they're appropriate in this instance. We have also added an emergency clause that would indicate that this ordinance will become effective after second reading. So those are all changes that were made since, since March tenth. Um, the version that went out on the web last week had the first four of those requirements. We added, uh, the emergency clause in another, or, another version and published it earlier this week. That concludes our presentation, unless the Board has any questions.
Commissioner Savas.
So, uh, Dan, could you help, um, clarify or, and verify, uh, what I'm about to say? Um, and that is, uh, just addressing that when people hear that this county moratorium, they think of the county and the boundaries. But our authority or our moratorium really applies to unincorporated areas, which is about half the population. Um, and then the other half of the population is in the jurisdiction of the cities, which are still within the county, but this moratorium has no effect. And I think that a lot of people are reading into this that somehow, uh, our moratorium would overlay the cities, which it does not. I understand that Sandy is going to be on, which is on the Highway Twenty-Six Core, or for example, uh, will be allowing that in their industrial areas and, but I think what's happened is that the messaging out there or the misunderstanding out there is that, um, our mo, moratorium does not affect what the cities can do. Still allows the cities to be there, to, to, um, employ whatever mechanisms they want, if any, and that there, that this does not affect it in the cities. But there are that, there is that. So could you, what do you know about what some of the cities are doing?
Uh, as far as I know right now, um, all I've been able to tell is that Sandy, as, as you mentioned, Commissioner, will be allowing, um, I think in their industrial zones, are gonna allow dispensaries and tax them. We're not sure what the other cities are doing yet. There's not a lot of information out there available on the web. But again, this ordinance does just only affects these commercial districts in Clackamas County.
And I think we have this conundrum is by virtue, really has, has not been a lot of jurisdictional coordination upon this effort. And I know a lot of us rely on the Legislature and legislative actions to help determine this, but I just wanted to point that out.
Commissioner Bernard.
So this really has nothing to do with this, but I thought I would bring it up while I'm sitting here thinking about it. But when I was a kid, I used to pick blackberry, I mean raspberries and strawberries. Is the, is the state law looking at minors' processing or production involvement? I mean, you may have migrants coming from other countries or from other areas of the country. Are they looking at the age limit for picking or producing these products?
We'll find out, Commissioner. We have no idea.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, I know that's happening now with, uh, with tobacco industry as well. There are a number of concerns that have been raised.
Commissioner Smith.
So regarding Measure Ninety-One, uh, I had a town hall meeting last night, and many questions in Boring, and many questions came up about, uh, grow facilities in the agriculture zones in the county. What does this measure do? What does this measure say about that?
The, this ordinance?
Well, what, yes. And then further on down the line.
So this ordinance really only affects medical marijuana dispensaries. We're not, we're not addressing grow issues at all. Um, there, there is a substantial amount of discussion at the state level right now about what to do with that. Some of that for Clackamas County really is gonna be focusing on what happens with rural residential. We've got about seventy thousand acres of rural residential, more than any other county in the state.
So what about just EFU-zoned lands? Is that permitted in EFU? Our gross facilities under Measure Ninety-One permitted in EFU?
It looks like that's where the legislation is headed.
Okay. And how is that licensed or approved? Do we do that at the county?
Again, it's, it's unclear right now what authority we are going to have, um, at the end of the day, in part because it hasn't been even worked out at the state level. The legislation hasn't been worked out. They haven't really worked out yet which agencies are best suited to address the issue. In other words, the OLCC has said, "Look, we're not a land, we're not LCDC. We're not a land use agency. We'd like LCDC to address that." I don't know if they've wanted to take it yet.
The reason I, I bring this up because there's so much confusion out there on the marijuana issue in general. So it was a good cross-section of my people last night at the meeting. And I had to explain to them the medical marijuana and then the recreational marijuana, and they all lump it together.
Yeah, they do.
And so why is that person being allowed to do that? And they call up and they report them. And there's a lot of concern out there of grow facilities popping up right now when, um, they're really getting ahead of what the law is, anticipating that it's gonna be illegal, legal, and everything that they do will be legal. And I've always been a, a word of caution. Just because Measure Ninety-One was approved, um, it's not a free-for-all. The minute you legalize something, it is also highly regulated. And I keep saying that to the people who want to engage in this business. So just a word of caution, uh, because later on, I could foresee them getting ahead, doing their grow operations, and then coming back to the county commissioners and saying, "You took away my livelihood." Well, I just think it's a mess.
Commissioner Schrader, oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to comment?
Um, we do have a policy session scheduled, I believe, for later this month to talk about exactly those issues, you know, where we are going for particularly the grow, the, uh, the grow issues.
Commissioner Schrader.
I just wanted to make a comment. I suspect that the other possibility is, uh, growing, it would be considered an agricultural product. So it could very well even end up under the auspice of the Department of Agriculture at the state. We just don't know.
No, we don't.
And we don't know how that's gonna, how that's gonna play out. Um, I think it would be more likely LCDC and/or the Department of Ag if it's considered to be a, you know, plant that people grow in fields or greenhouses. So, I think we just have to wait and see. Uh, get some more direction from the Legislature.
Commissioner Savas.
So, you know, Dan, you, I think you outlined quite well the, all the uncertainty. And I think part of the angst that, um, that we have here is the uncertainty. And, and while the Legislature's moving forward, um, I think the other thing that people really need to realize that we are being approached by, our staff's being approached, elected officials are being approached, cities, uh, business owners are being approached. They wanna have a grow operation. They wanna have a retail operation. With all this uncertainty, we really can't answer a lot of these questions. But, um, I think that some people think that, "Well, you're, you're overreacting by initiating this or that." Well, what they don't know in the background, and there's probably not a lot of people here today that are representing some of those businesses, that have approached me and saying, "I'm worried, really worried. I have a person who wants to rent one of my buildings. What do the laws allow or disallow?" And with this uncertainty, it's really hard for us to respond because, again, this is something that'll be, uh, later clarified, uh, with, by the legislative actions. But there's a lot more uncertainty than there is clarity by far.
Yeah, I wanna, wanna remind us all that we're here on the medical marijuana thing. I know there's a lot of conjecture and a lot of confusion, which we'll get to later in regards to Ninety-One. All right. So I had a couple of questions. Um, under, um, under H, it says, "Premises does not include the parking area or the landscape areas located outside of the building or buildings which accommodate the primary activities of medical marijuana facility." Then later on, in, um, under Section Eight Oh Nine Oh Three Oh, it says, um, again, "There should be no manufacturer, production of any extracts, oils, et cetera." And then we talk about on the premises. Um, so I'm concerned about the premises. I, I thought that premises would include the property which they occupy, including the land. Further on, under G, uh, in relationship to a minor, and I guess the state, um, says that if they're accompanied, um, they're, if an adult is accompanied by a child, then that would be okay. Again, on the premises would mean inside. And, um, so the C also, uh, mari- marijuana and tobacco products must not be smoked, ingested, or otherwise consumed. Again, it says on the premises, which doesn't preclude it from occurring in the parking lot. And I'm concerned about that, especially since we've established these rings, uh, around the facilities. We don't want these, uh, these operations to occur within. Uh, then I'm concerned that, that, that doesn't preclude somebody from ingesting or otherwise smoking medical marijuana in the parking lot.
The public consumption, uh, is illegal under state law, both Measure Ninety-One and the medical marijuana program. So, uh, that's the reason for the use of the term premises there. However, the setbacks are measured from the property line. That's eight point oh nine oh four oh sub C. So we're, we're measuring distances from the property line, but premises mean the facility itself. And as to minors on the premises, the issue really there is not wanting children left in the car. If they're accompanying the parent who is a cardholder. They cannot be in the presence of the marijuana, but they can come to the, the, uh, the waiting area. That's, that's what state law allows right now. So there's a sort of, you've gotta go through, show your card and go through into a secure area to actually obtain the product. We wanted to make sure that children couldn't be anywhere else except that waiting area. And again, the reason to allow them in the waiting area at all is so they don't, you don't encourage people to leave the kids in the car.
So, uh, does anything preclude somebody from ingesting or otherwise smoking in their automobile still on the property where the, uh, premises are located?
That would be governed by other law. It would seem to me that that would still be public consumption.
Well, yeah, windows, right, that could be seen. Uh, the last thing is, you know, you have described, um, under, uh, what page is this? La, la, la. Uh, Eight Oh Nine Oh Four Oh, under H, "Home occupation of facility may not be operated as a home occupation, may not have a walk-up window, a drive-through, and may not operate on, from a non-fixed location." Whenever I think about non-fixed locations, I think of, of food carts. They're pretty fixed. A lot of times they drop the wheels off of them and drop them there. Would, would something like that, that can be moved, um, would something like that qualify under this as a non-fixed location?
They would still have to comply. They'd have to have an OHA approval. I mean, this is really, in some senses, slightly redundant, right? The OHA has to approve a location and security and all of those sorts of things. We just wanted this there as a, as a precautionary note, because we have fairly broad provisions and somewhat complex about mobile vending, depending on whether you're driving around all the time, how long you can park in one place, and those sorts of things. We thought, you know, why not just go ahead and clarify here once again that you can't have mobile whole marijuana vending, particularly since there's, there's the notion that some of this may continue to apply, uh, to recreational marijuana.
Right. All right. Uh, we, uh, I think we might have some additional questions after the public testimony, but I'm gonna open the public hearing and call you up and put you on deck in twos. Now, excuse me if I don't get these right. I go by printing. Todd Fulcher, Sarah Poole, followed by James Garcia and David Schnendig. I don't know. Again, my apologies. Everybody will, everybody will have three minutes. And, um, you know, considering we've got quite a few cards, I'd like you to really try to confine it within that time. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you to the Council for hearing us out. My name is Sarah Poole. My address is seven one zero five Southeast Overland Street here in Milwaukee. I am a Clackamas County resident. I also work at a dispensary currently. I work at a dispensary that has no plans on ever going to a recreational facility. So I'd like to, first of all, address the assumption that all of the facilities would like to go recreational. That's simply not true. The second thing I'd like to address is that as a former Food Policy Council member, somebody who sat on zoning, reconfiguring laws, somebody who's always been a civic member of our society and our county, it's really important for all of us to be able to participate in our communities. And one of the ways that we can best do that is to financially, economically, and medically support our communities. About two years ago, I had approached my friend Todd here about moving a facility up to Rodedendron, up to the mountain, to combine my love of being outdoors with also my passion of bringing quality medicine to the residents there. And since that time, we've had quite an outcry of people who have currently no outlet, no way to buy their medicine. The reason that it's important for them to go to dispensaries is because they can obtain products that are not available currently on the black market. Products that are high in CBDs, low in THCs, products that are specifically targeted to help cancer patients, leukemia patients, epilepsy patients, et cetera. These products are not available currently on the black market. The only place to get them is at a dispensary with a medical marijuana card. As, because I'm personally a medical marijuana patient, I can see the benefits every day of these types of medicines. And I can also testify that these people are not going to be able to get that quality on the black market and are not also going to be able to drive beyond ten miles in order to obtain this medicine. If people have to drive further than ten miles, they are going to have to resort once again to the black market. And I think that's something that we, as voters, personally voted to try and limit, which is why we voted yes on these proposals. And as our representatives, it's kind of disappointing that you would decide to go against the wishes of your constituents. I see so many real patients with so many real products in my dispensary that turning these people to the black market would disservice them, and it would disservice the communities that are outside of your urban growth boundary. I also think personally that your, your restrictions go extremely far beyond what is considered reasonable restrictions for the time, place, and manner restrictions. And that's pretty obvious by the fact that you're so far extreme over anyone else. Thank you.
I just wanna remind everybody as they're coming and going, if you could use the back door. Uh, because of our microphones, they pick up a lot of noise, and those center doors are very loud. So if you could do that, we'd greatly appreciate that. Yes, sir?
Good morning. My name is Todd Fulcher. Um, I live, uh, part-time in Rodedendron, Oregon. My address is two six five nine seven East Henry Creek Road. Coming from a slightly different angle on this, so I'd just like to explain to you what's been going on with us for the last year. Sarah had approached me about a year ago with an idea for a medical dispensary in my town. Um, I had been searching for business opportunity on the mountain, and though hesitant, was soon convinced by her dual passion for this medicine in the mountain, that, uh, we ended up, uh, purchasing a failing antique store in Rodedendron. And after much work last year, we're granted a license to operate a medical dispensary by the state. We were, uh, getting ready to hire a contractor from Sandy, uh, several tradesmen from the local area. We were getting ready to hire several employees, and we're going to use local growers and businesses to help stock our store. We applied for a building permit in January two thousand and fifteen, and we were denied that permit in March because our location sits outside the urban growth boundary. I have lived part-time in Rodedendron for three years, and I have watched the slow march of progression on our main drag. And I think our opening would contribute to that forward march and help local businesses and residents. We are in a commercial area with no schools nearby, and our location exceeds all the parameters of the, of, uh, of your new rules in all ways but one. I understand that the committee does not want a proliferation of dispensaries in rural areas, but there must be a middle ground so that a limited number can open and serve their communities. They've done this with much sex and, uh, much success in Colorado with some of their rural communities there. I ask the committee to, uh, consider allowing those of us who are licensed by the state to be allowed to open so people in outer Clackamas have access to safe and legal medicine. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, when you come forward, you do not have to give your full address, just the city you come from, 'cause, uh, we will have that information on our blue card. So it is James Garcia and David, you'll have to pronounce that for me, David, and followed by Randy Rappaport and Aaron Purchase. Either one of you.
Hi. Um, I'm James, and, um, I'm a medical marijuana patient, and I take, um, marijuana for, uh, 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 pain and muscle spasms. And I live in Rodedendron. Um, I do not drive, so it's very difficult for me to get my medicine. Um, I have to take three different buses, and, um, I have to ride the MAX just to get my medicine. It'd be nice if it was a little bit closer, um, in Rhodey, um, because I have to wait till I get home to medicate, and it's just a little bit out there. home to medicate, and it's just a little bit out there. And, yeah, I just, I benefit from medical marijuana, and it helps me in a multitude of ways, including high anxiety in front of people, and muscle spasms. And I don't know where I would be without medical marijuana, and I just was wondering. I was here to try and get a dispensary put in Rhodey so I didn't have to go so far to get my medicine.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'm David Schneddig. I'm a resident of Welch's, Oregon. I'm a homeowner. I have three children, and I've used marijuana and continue to use marijuana for similar medical reasons. I'm a chef. I've been a chef for 21 years, since I was 14 years old. I'm now 35. It's what I do. There's a lot of heavy lifting, turning, there's long hours, there's weird hours. So, in order to support my family, in order to get through my day, I do not consume marijuana before I go to work. I find it difficult to multitask and do my job. However, when I get home, my back is destroyed. I can't get up off the couch unless I consume a very small amount. And I'm not talking get completely stoned where you're not functional. I'm talking a small amount, such as somebody taking a little bit of ibuprofen or something like that to relieve their back pain. I've had times where my back spazzes out, and I can't sleep. I have to sleep upright. And possibly many of you also have experienced something similar as we approach our older age, that parts of our bodies don't work the same anymore. I find with marijuana, topically, and in the way of topical rub in the salve, or orally in terms of ingestible glycerin, also by smoking or vaporizing, that it reduces the symptoms of these pains and the inflammation, which allows me to get up for work the next day, get a full night's rest, earn my income, make my payments, and support my family. Currently, as, you know, the last three speakers have said, that in order to obtain medical marijuana legally on Mount Hood, it's about an hour drive each way to go all the way into parts of Portland, or Gresham, Far Gresham, Milwaukee. A lot of these strains that you're able to get on the black market are not tested most of the time. There may be molds, there may be different sorts of things that can ultimately get somebody sick and not do what they're supposed to do, which is prevent cancer, things like that. As James said, the round trip, if you're not a driver, can be really time-consuming. So, somebody with severe chronic pain, you know, there's patients on the mountain that are elderly patients with rheumatoid arthritis that are incapable of functioning without using the medicine. These people are not able to get down to the city regularly and obtain these high CBD strains that relieve their symptoms. There's cancer patients on the mountain, there's people that don't drive, of all ages. You know, it is a difficult financial area. There are limited jobs, there's low property tax, you know, there's a lot, not a lot of money for that area of the county, as it seems. But I guess I'm over my time, so.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Well, you, one of your comments was that smoking marijuana prevents cancer. Is that what you said? You did say that?
I did say that, yes.
It does prevent cancer?
Well, as far as the research and the studies that I've read, and albeit, you know, on paper, on the internet, a lot of the studies that are coming out now prove that THC and different CBDs can actually attack cancer cells, where they go in and break these cancer cells down and eliminate them completely. So, I'm not sure that smoking, of course, for anybody is bad. You know, there are carcinogens in smoke. However, vaporizing it and reducing the carcinogens, or orally ingesting it, has proven to eliminate cancer, destroy cancer. I know people that have killed skin cancer with topical...
So, it doesn't prevent cancer. It's a treatment for cancer.
It's a treatment for cancer, yes. I mean, blueberries are also a treatment, but they also, you know, defend it at the same time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you both. Randy Rappaport, and Erin Purchase, followed by Shirley Morgan, and Mike Mullins. Either one of you.
Hi. My name is Erin Purchase. I'm from Oregon City. I am hoping to present my story to you guys to maybe change the way that you're looking at cannabis as you go forth in making these rules. In 2012, my seven-year-old daughter was diagnosed with acute lymphoblastic leukemia. It had metastasized to her brain and spinal column, and her condition was very severe. We immediately started her on chemotherapy, but every time the doctors administered it and would wait till the next week, the cancer count would go back up. I was already an activist and working with several patients that had cancer, and I knew about cannabis oil. So, I immediately got my daughter on the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program in July of 2012, 10 days after she was diagnosed with leukemia. The day before, I gave her high THC cannabis oil. I was told by the oncologist that we would probably be going to transplant because she was a slow responder. She would also need full body radiation and brain radiation because of the cancer in her brain. I gave her that oil on Tuesday, July 24, and seven days later, the cancer was gone. I know, I did not have to radiate my child's brain. I did not have to give her a bone marrow transplant. Not only that, she went through 28 months of intensive chemotherapy of six to eight drugs that made her very ill, but she was not as ill as any other children at Randall Children's Hospital here in Portland, Oregon. She did not take a single Tylenol, where most children take oxycodone and morphine. She did not lose a single pound when most children are walking through the halls with a feeding tube in their nose. My child was able to eat. My child was able to thrive. Most children spend the majority of their first year hospitalized. My daughter spent 14 days in the entire two years of treatment. That saved the state of Oregon a lot of money. Not only that, I replaced five commonly-used prescribed medications with cannabis oil alone. My daughter is now done with treatments. She finished in October of 2015. She's a third grader at Gaffney Lane Elementary School, doing phenomenal. Without cannabis, I don't think my daughter would be here today. And safe access is extremely important, not because of CBD, because my daughter, CBD's important, THC's important, this plant's important. My daughter took high THC, and what's important about a dispensary is that dispensaries are required by law to test their products and provide safe products to the patient. And instead of banning these facilities and imposing strict rules because you think that these people are horrible people, and being so strict on children and away from schools, the only reason my daughter's in school today, I think, is because of this plant. What's important is teaching our children the truth, maybe developing a campaign effort, teaching them the truth about this plant. Thank you.
Commissioner Sathas?
Just want to say you're aware that we lifted the moratorium on a few of the pre-established facility, medical marijuana facilities.
I'm aware of that, but I advocate for several patients, and I know that there are patients under this ban that are being affected, and that's, that's several families. There are 200 minor children on the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program. And that's just children, there's a lot of adults.
I just, my, my point was that just down the street in the McLaughlin area, just north of Oregon City, is you can, today, buy medical marijuana today. You're aware of that.
Yes, but the people up on the mountain cannot.
Well, we, we heard about Sandy, and that's 19 miles from Rhododendron. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I just say, we're all sympathetic to marijuana as a medical use. That's not the issue. What we're really dealing with here, that, that's been established, it's been in law now. What, what we have to do as local officials is to figure out the zoning issues. And there really isn't any business in this county that isn't subject to zoning rules. So, that's really what we're grappling with. It's not really trying to limit access, it's trying to figure out where these things land...
Please don't interrupt the commissioner.
Because, I mean, being, quite frankly, you know, you don't want to have, we've got an industrial area down 212th Corridor, and you probably wouldn't want to be next to Pacific Sea Foods or Warren Winches. That's why they're there. So, we're just trying to figure this out. So, so I, I hope that people understand. We are here to follow the law. We're really looking at this from a land use perspective at this point. And, you know, the people have spoken, and we're just trying to see the best way to cite something the way we cite anything else in this county that is a business. And, so that's, just clarify that. It really, it's really land use as opposed to anything else at this point, so.
All right. Yes, sir?
Hello there, commissioners. My name's Randy Rappaport. I live in Portland and also have a home in the mountain community of Rhododendron, where I spend several days a week. I've written my notes, so.
Scoot that microphone as close as you can to yourself, will you?
Thank you.
I can barely hear you.
Balanced solutions for reasonable and safe access and business development should be available for the mountain areas located far outside of the urban growth boundary. My business partners and I each own homes on the mountain, and have, each have members of our households who are OMMP cardholders, who use the medication to medicate chronic pain. Safe access is needed at the eastern half of the county. It is a hardship for patients who may not have reasonable access otherwise. Not everybody has a car available to drive, and sometimes it can be dangerous to drive in that part of the county. From a business and job creation perspective, by the way, I'm a partner in the, with Todd Fulcher, in the Rhododendron licensed facility. From a business and a job creation perspective, we have been licensed by the Oregon Health Authority to open a facility in Rhododendron in a commercial zone, and have plans to invest further in the community. This would mean the creation of several full-time jobs. And I understand from looking at Commissioner Ludlow's website that business development and job creation is an important part of, of your vision. We would like the right to do business outside of the metro urban growth boundary to serve the mountain villages who need safe access. We are located more than two miles from the nearest OLCC liquor store, as well as the schools. Regarding, regarding geographic limitations, I have a few recommendations for solutions because we want to be solution-oriented to allowing safe access for people who have medical marijuana cards and need the medication. Oh, real...
Go ahead, finish your sentence.
Thank you. I, a solution could be a 15-mile buffer outside of the metro UGB boundary, or a limitation of the number of licensed facilities that are already, have been licensed for a grandfathering. So, you know, I'm asking for either a buffer or a limitation, and that would allow people with, with needs to have safe access. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, it is Shirley Morgan, and Mike Mullins, followed by Matt Walstatur, and from Happy Valley, it's Jennifer Valley. Either one of you.
Well, good morning, commissioners. My name is Shirley Morgan. I'm from Welch's. Though I have compassion for those wanting to develop a business theory they believe in, and empathy for those wanting an alternative medicine, marijuana dispensaries do not hold to the same standards as the rest of the businesses in the county because they do not abide by federal law, and marijuana has never been approved by the FDA. Simply put, there are threats to our public safety, quality of life, and property values. Many of these businesses operate by cash. My dentist office on 122nd has a marijuana dispensary down the street that has already had an armed robbery. And two weeks later, their office was burglarized. There are also over 46,570 registered marijuana growers in Oregon who grow for cardholders and supply dispensaries in Clackamas County. 3,448 of those growers, which are unregulated and undefined, are in Clackamas County. There are over 742 growers from Damascus to Government Camp, 514 in Oregon City, 372 in Milwaukee, many of which are attracting in-home invasions, armed robberies, fires, and hash oil explosions. A small business owner on Powell Boulevard who teaches piano lessons to kids had a marijuana dispensary open next door, and complained of the smell of marijuana and public consumption. Within days, parents were asking him about this and said they would no longer be bringing their children to this facility. He had two options, move, which is costly, or close the door. A second example is in Holiday Inn in Frisco, Colorado. Without notice, a marijuana dispensary moved in across the street with plans to not only sell, but to manufacture close by as well. Within weeks, the Holiday Inn was getting cancellation letters from parents and ski team leaders that they would no longer be bringing their kids to that facility. The Holiday Inn has filed a federal RICO, racketeer-influenced and corrupt organizations act lawsuit against the dispensary, the property owner, the contractor who after being served has ceased all work, the electrician, and Bank of the West who after being served has closed all accounts. Although I cannot support this ordinance because I believe these facilities are a form of corrupt legality and should have been banned under federal law, I do commend the staff and the commissioners for creating time, manner, and place regulations that are reflective of some of my concerns. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions the commissioners might have.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Hi. My name is Mike Mullins from Happy Valley. I'm a lifetime resident and business owner. I've graduated with honors from Clackamas Schools. I'm 62 years old and very active in politics recently. I'm sure a number of you have seen me at your fundraisers. I'm fortunate to have been on the steady session for the time, place, and manner. Today, I'd like to talk about the immediate future of economics for our county. As we face huge deficits and we have taxed everything we can, we have problems with our budgets and our roads. I see that you have a town hall meeting entitled "Growing a Vibrant Economy" on April 21st. A little plug for you there, and I will be there because I believe that we should be embracing this new industry for many reasons. First of all, cannabis is not going away. It's being implemented in Oregon. There has been a medical marijuana program in Oregon for over 15 years. This is nothing new, something we should have looked at sooner than this. It is, in fact, the fastest-growing business in the world, as recorded by Harvard Educational The, we believe that there will be interstate and international trade within the next few years. In fact, I've already provided an implementation, a five-year implementation plan to your healthcare providers, which they're going to start as early as July 1st. So, yes, it is going to be happening through the federal level. By passing this ordinance, you are banning or otherwise stopping me from my dreams and plans of operating a business in the county that I love and live in. I'm concerned that if the commission lacks the vision to usher in a new stream of income and a new industry, then how do you handle more important matters such as the Eagle Landings Project or the repair of our roads? We need to have the vision in our leadership to move this county into the future. And I would like to also make a statement in regards to some of the things such as normalization. It is very imperative that the county develop public education awareness for our youth, not just throw it off to the side and under the carpet and expect things to just be good because we can ban them. My hat's off to Sandy because they have embraced this. As an industry leader, I can tell you that we would very much know that we, we need the time, place, and manner, but in a regulated, not in such a dramatic way as you have done it to put us out of business. My hat's are off to Sandy because they have a... they have a conditional use permit, which we have suggested to Clackamas County. They're going to be making money off of this new industry and being able to put that to work in their county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So it is Jennifer Valley from Happy Valley. Matt Walstater, you'll have to correct me. Matt, sorry.
Good afternoon, Chair Ludlow, members of the Commission. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to say that Clackamas County has been a high-intensity drug trafficking area for a very long time now. And the fact that you get federal dollars because you are a high-intensity drug trafficking area means you know you have a drug dealer problem. Allowing legal commerce is exactly what you need to put those drug dealers out of business. But the fact that you've decided to give them 2,500-foot setbacks from this, that, and the other thing shows that you like them and you want to keep them, and you don't want to infringe on their business. And I think it's entirely inappropriate. I think it's also important that you be aware that federal law is changing very quickly. The Cromnibus Bill passed December 18th no longer funds funding for marijuana eradication in states that have medical marijuana laws. That means ours. There's also a bill in the Senate and in the House that will recognize medical marijuana in all of the states. So things are changing very quickly. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Chair Ludlow, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Matt Walstater. I live in Portland, Oregon. My wife Megan and I are medical marijuana growers. We own a dispensary called Pure Green in Portland, and we hope to open a dispensary in Clackamas County eventually as well. I think you guys have a huge challenge here as all local and local governments and the state of Oregon as well in taking this industry and moving it from the shadows, from the black market, to become a legal legitimate industry. And we are really excited to be able to participate in that process. There's some facts that you're, we're all kind of stuck with, you know? This is an important medicine, and patients need access to it. We've also legalized it for recreational purposes. And so now the challenge is, how do we build a system that meets the needs of all the stakeholders involved, including the patients, the consumers, the business owners, the, you know, the public, the county government, and does it in a way that ends the black market? We are a very heavily regulated industry at the state level right now, at least on the dispensary side, and that will be the same on the grow side as well. We are compliant in every way. We don't have issues with minors purchasing from us or consuming. We don't have any issues with public consumption. In fact, we take great pains to make sure that we follow all of these rules. Our products are safe. They're all lab-tested for purity as well as for potency. And there's a lot of evidence that dispensaries actually make neighborhoods safer. A 2011 Rand Corporation study, also a study by the University of Denver, found that when dispensaries move into neighborhoods, crime goes down. And I'd be happy to provide more information on those studies and others that show exactly that. There are more security. We have cameras. There are more eyes on the street. People pay more attention when dispensaries come, and many neighborhoods have seen benefits to that. And we also create living wage jobs. We currently have 10 employees. We'll have more soon. And we pay our taxes, something that every county needs. Contrast this with the black market. Because the option is not any longer marijuana or no marijuana, the option is the black market or a legitimate legal industry. You know, it's a great soundbite, but drug dealers don't check IDs, and that's true. We do. Drug dealers don't pay taxes. We do. So, again, I urge you to think about this transition from the black market to a legitimate industry. Identify the members of the industry that are willing to work with you and to be compliant and to run safe legitimate businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Savis?
I do have a question for you, Matt, and that is, you mentioned you retail in Portland today, medical marijuana. So what's your opinion on the outlook for the recreational piece as far as competition or the black market? What's your viewpoint on that?
Well, first of all, we're really excited about Measure 91 and the chance to enter the recreational market. We think that there are a lot of choices that need to be made in the implementation process, and those choices are going to govern how this all plays out. But I believe that we're on the right track in the state of Oregon. I think that we have the opportunity to really eliminate the black market altogether over time. I think that we have House Bill 3400 and Senate Bill 936, which are both, they'll probably be reconciled between the two, but what they do is they co-locate medical and recreational stores. So what that does is it gives us the ability to serve both populations, the medical patients and the recreational customers. It enables us to do that efficiently and to make sure that we have adequate supplies.
Okay. I'm going to ask you. I mean, I appreciate the answer, and we're getting a little off-subject here. We're talking about medical, and I appreciate you trying to answer the Commissioner's question, but probably, time's up.
All right. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone else has or to, you know, speak privately about any of these matters. Thank you.
Thank you. You're a good speaker, and many of you have been. And finally, it is Tracy Anderson.
Hi. My name is Tracy Anderson. I own a restaurant bar up in Rhododendron zigzag area called the Skyway Bar and Grill. Really nervous. We've been in business for 15 years now, and it's been a real big challenge in that area because of the economy in our area and statewide, of course, and the weather. I, yes, especially this year. My husband and I definitely want any responsible businesses in our area, especially if they're going to be employing people, supporting the local economy. And we also, you know, definitely want to support safe medicine to our friends and family. My mom just recently had cancer, and she unfortunately didn't feel safe with the marijuana, just because it's so controversial right now. I want to get to a point where she feels safe with, you know, going down to a dispensary rather than going down to the pharmacy, which I think is also a valid place. We have a pharmacy now. Let's please have a dispensary where people know exactly what they're getting. The black market has been talked about a lot, and people are going to the black market. And if we have a place where marijuana is being tested, THC, I don't know how to put it into terms properly, but if this medicine is being tested and found safe, then let's get it to our local people and not make them drive to Sandy, which is a 40-mile round trip. If you're sick, that's a very, very long drive. So, again, my name is Tracy. I own a restaurant up in Rhododendron called the Skyway Bar and Grill, and we definitely support this. Thank you for your time.
Well, I should say that you support this, but understanding that it will not allow for the opening in Rhododendron. So you may have meant that you actually opposed this unless it was changed to allow it in more of the rural areas. Is that what you meant?
I definitely support that we allow the dispensary to open in Rhododendron. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. And let me grab my script here. It's buried. All right. So entertain the motion. Commissioner Bernard?
So there's a couple of things. Before I make a motion, or anyone makes a motion, I think the argument that, you know, it's 19 miles to the nearest facility is not, well, we know it's not true. Sandy allows it, right?
That's 19 miles. That's 19 miles.
Okay. Okay, so I need a car. There's a great bus line.
Yeah, there's the bus line, yeah.
So, so there's a great bus line that could allow people to give the, folks. We can't allow shout-outs from the audience. Please. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, Jim?
The other thing that really drives me crazy is that, you know, it's tax revenue. I mean, we tax everything, and it, I don't know of a tax we have that actually pays for the, what it causes. Alcohol tax, I mean, it does not, it creates opportunity to get more alcohol, but it doesn't pay for the treatment costs, the arrests, the jails, all those other things. It's also true with marijuana. We don't know the impact statewide. So whether we collect a tax or not is not going to solve the problem that will be created by legalizing marijuana. But that's outside the subject. I, you know, I guess that for me, outside the urban growth boundary, isn't a big issue. I'm more concerned that if we don't address it now, somebody else may address it. And that if we said something like, within seven miles of the urban growth boundary, then that might address some of those things. Because of our restrictions around how close they are to all those, you know, schools and childcare facilities, I think we should say something like seven miles, which would prevent it from, let's say I'm going to go up to Government Camp and pull over there and ski all day and now stop for marijuana and drive down the mountain the rest of the way. I think it reduces that a little bit, certainly during one of the, I mean, through one of the most dangerous areas. So I would hope that the Commission might consider within seven miles of the urban growth boundary. But I will support a motion to move this forward.
All right. Is there a motion? So we get it on the floor and talk about it?
It's just to read by title only.
Oh, sorry. Oh, wait. It was my error here. So I would ask, I would ask for a motion to read, well, it's right there, folks, to read the ordinance by title only.
So I move. We read the ordinance by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. The motion's been made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Savis, to read the ordinance by title only. I'll ask the clerk to call. Do you want to discuss that? Do you want to wait on that?
Oh, wait.
Okay, so I think we're ready for the poll. I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 5-0. I'll ask the clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is going to be ordinance number 04-2015, and ordinance amending the Clackamas County Code to add Chapter 8.09, establishing time, place, and manner regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries and declaring an emergency.
Commissioner Smith?
I think that, Jim, I appreciate what you're trying to do here. I'm not ready to move on that because we haven't studied the implications yet. My question for anybody who would want to do this, why would we give special consideration to marijuana when we don't to other businesses? I think it's discriminatory. We're just going to say, okay, because it's marijuana, they're special. They get a business and a location where nobody else does. So that's the issue I have. There's a fairness issue, and this board hasn't discussed that yet. Whereas the folks, most of the folks in this room are huge supporters of marijuana. There is that many more folks out there who do not support this and don't like what we're doing today. Just so you know that, nobody's going to be happy. There's a lady in the room here today who's been very vocal and an advocate against marijuana, and she doesn't want us to do it today for another reason. So I think any more technical changes to what we're doing today is going to have to take a lot more time and thought and staff time, and I don't know that we have that. I think we need to wait and see what the legislature does on a whole host of things. Even though the legislature is dealing with recreational marijuana, medical marijuana facilities will be affected, as gone by testimony that we heard today. So I think that we'll just, my thing is, we just need to pass this. See where it falls. I also think that legislatures for many years to come will be dealing with this issue and tweaking the law. So it's not going to be the last time that there's going to be fixes or amendments made to what we're doing today.
Commissioner Bernard?
So just for arguments?
Yeah.
Government camp, I mean, Rhododendron, what business would we not allow there?
Well, if you're extending the urban growth boundary, anybody wanted to apply.
Well, I think we're talking about zoning.
Yeah, we're zoning.
Light manufacturing in certain areas aren't allowed, heavy manufacturing.
Well, that's true all over, and this is not zoned any different than a commercial zone anywhere else that I know of. So, I mean, I don't know that, that, you know, actually we're restricting this more than anything else we restrict. And saying that we're giving them special ability to go to somebody else is not really true because we are really restricting this more than anything else we do. And not that I disagree with that, but, you know, I have some concerns that, like I said, I don't agree with the argument that I have to drive all these miles to get my medical supplies. But I think that, you know, in some way, we're, we know we're all prejudiced towards this issue because we have concerns that have not, will not be addressed no matter what happens. But I think that we have to think of it as any other business because the voter said we should.
Just to clarify, actually, there's a legislature that made medical marijuana facilities available in the state of Oregon. The voters, that was on recreational. Commissioner Savis?
Well, I just, it's important to point out that the second reading of this ordinance will be on April 16th. So we're not actually making a decision here today. We're just, this is part of the hearing process, in which we have the time to study this a little bit further and learn how far along some of the other rural cities are. And I think this also, there's a temporary element of this moratorium or what we're passing here today in that we are, we're waiting for the legislature, I was pointing out earlier. So as staff, Mr. Chandler pointed out earlier, which I believe is correct, we can easily relax a lot of our standards based on what the legislative action is. So this is more of a, somewhat of a placeholder, in essence, until the legislature makes a call. And it may be that this might be all for naught, that it might be moot. So we'll see how, what the legislature acts. I do know, so my understanding is that there are medical marijuana grow permits out there. How many people actually grow in the audience? Okay? And some of you live in Rhododendron. So in a way, that need is being satisfied. What we're doing today does not make that illegal. So it's perfectly legal within the constraints of the law, spelled out today by virtue of SB 1531, that you can do that. So that is available to you today. And I imagine that there's other people that are, that grow up in the mountain that have a permit as well. So having that said, I will look forward to April 16th, and I will probably make a couple of phone calls to some of you that have spoke today that left your phone numbers. So, thank you.
Commissioner Schrader?
I want to thank you, Commissioner, for pointing that out because that's pretty much what I was going to point out, that this is the first reading of an ordinance. As I said, I see it as grappling with a land use issue at this point and zoning issues. So this is not the last word. We have time between now and then if we wanted to continue a conversation to address some of this.
Sure.
Because we are still able to amend on April 16th. Should we deem, whether or not we will, is a totally another conversation. But, but, but
Let's talk about it.
We do want to listen to the public. But I have one question for, a legal question here, because this has always puzzled me. Is the reason why our pharmacies can't dispense this is because it's illegal at the federal level? Because that's what I've always grappled with. Because it does, I do believe that, you know, certainly it seems true that there are medicinal uses for marijuana. But when I take the medications I have, they're regulated. They go through an FDA process. Am I correct? There's standards. There's, you know, you have pharmaceutical companies that develop this and other entities. And I just puzzle as to why, why we can't and that, am I correct? And I, I just puzzled as to why, why we can't and that, am I correct in assuming it's because it's still illegal at the federal level?
That's correct. It's still a class one, class one controlled substance. I think drug, I believe that there is synthetic THC, there are some for related drugs that have been approved, but not, not marijuana at the federal level.
So if that changes at the federal level, then we would probably have a whole other regulatory scheme, you know, framework whereby it would become a substance that, that is prescribed by physicians for specific issues. So, but I don't know where that is or if that's even happening at the federal level at this point, so.
Let me, go, go.
I've got to go.
Come on, you guys, let's hang in here.
I'll stay.
The, in a moment, I'll ask if the commissioners want to propose any changes or amendments, but I want to clarify something first with our legal staff. This is the first reading, there's going to be two. We can certainly amend it now, but this is being declared an emergency. So, you know, we talk about the words substantive changes. So what kind of changes can be made at the, I think it's an evening meeting? Yeah, an evening meeting. And I might inform everybody, because of, of commission duties, two of us will be gone on that meeting, so it'll only be three commissioners here. But describe to us, first of all, what changes can be made in this meeting, which I understand are quite a few, but on the second meeting, how, how many changes or, or do they have to be substanti-, substantive or what?
Commissioners, if the ordinance differs substantially from that which is posted and noticed, then you would either have to have a third reading of it, which would be thirteen days apart, or you would read the text in its entirety, the body of the changes, as opposed to just by title only. You read the text in its entirety of the changed portions and that would comply with the amendment process. You would not need a third reading.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
No. What substantive mean?
Well.
It depends. If you were to say, for example, today, if you were to say from two thousand feet to two thousand and five feet, that's not, differ substantially. If you were to say we're going to make it separations from gas stations and restaurants and things along those lines and it would change the map that the staff has presented to you, that would differ substantially. If you were to modify the UGB restriction, I would say that would differ substantially.
And the second question I have is, what if? What if this county doesn't pass anything by that deadline? What happens then to Clackamas County regards to medical outlets?
The ordinance, the moratorium ordinance expires on May one. What that would mean would be that as retail uses, they could be located anywhere else in the county, one could locate a retail use.
Okay, I just want to clarify that because we have taken a, a lot of time with this and some would think we're, we're kind of at eleven fifty-nine PM here in a lot of ways. We've done that to a large part to try to engage with all parties involved in this, including outlet stores or people, owners who wanted to own that and arrive at a fair and a time, place, and manner. But if this doesn't pass in time, I would say, in my opinion, that's a huge failure, failure on our part to at least semi-restrict. I want to remind everybody too, that nothing, as Commissioner Savis said, is permanent forever. I think it'll be very interesting to see what kind of difficulties arise or not out of the medical marijuana facilities that would be allowed under this ordinance. Commissioner Bernard?
So what we do at this point is that we're not, we could make a motion to amend.
Correct.
And if we don't, then we just set a date. That's all. There isn't any other motions today.
No.
If, that is true. And there, you can make a motion, from what I understand from what Mr. Madcor said, at the next meeting, but any changes made cannot be substantial. Is that correct, Mr. Madcor?
The term of art in the statute, Chair, is differs substantially. But you can, again, you can remedy that during the second meeting if you were to read the changes in full. So if you were to be striking provisions, it would be a short read and it wouldn't be too cumbersome. Typically, though, we read by title only for efficiency and expediency sake.
But because we voted this right now.
No, we've only voted to read it by title only.
Well, that's all we're voting on today.
Yeah, we are not voting on the ordinance itself.
So, so let's say I made another motion right now to change something.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a substantial change, so we would have to read the ti-, read it in full, right?
I'm going to play a scenario for you, okay? You are going to say, how about we change the UGB restriction and your colleagues would agree with you. This group would come back on the sixteenth, I believe is the date, they would come back on the sixteenth with an ordinance which would have stricken from it the UGB restriction. At that time, if you wanted to do it at that date in an emergency, you would read the section which is going to be
You know, where is it?
Altered.
Section.
Actually, I understand.
You'd read just the section right there as to where these things are allowed into the record in its entirety, not the whole ordinance. And then if the group were to approve of it by three votes, then it would be effective immediately upon passage without a third reading.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Savis, Commissioner Smith?
Smith, thank you, folks. We already voted. I'm doing Salem to testify on another bill, so I'm going to have to leave, but I trust this is in good hands. Thank you very much.
I want to announce that there'll be a second reading and that will be on April sixteenth, an evening business meeting and it starts at six PM. So if, if any of you want to leave, again, remember it's the back, the back door for you folks, right? Thank you very much. And so now I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a construction contract with North Pacific Construction for the Beaver Creek Health Clinic remodel project in Oregon City. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a special public works funding financing contract with Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority for the design and construction of improvements to Last Road. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services and the District Attorney's Office for participating in court appearances and related activities in juvenile dependency proceedings. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Do any commissioners want to remove any of those items?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Schrader for their discussion. All right, Mary, the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. And now, unfortunately, the audience has left for this important moment for Mr. Krupf's important administrator update.
You know, we could use the meeting list to send out a note to everybody to invite them to watch this part of the program.
Yeah, definitely.
So I just have a couple of items. One is, is just this week, we were informed by a national economic development consulting firm known as Fourth Economy, that Clackamas County is ranked among the top ten large counties nationally for its economic development capacity and well-being. We are actually ranked at number four of the list of the top ten large counties. The, the communication we received tells us that the, the ranking is based on what is statistical and qualitative factors that are done at the county level that look at the areas of investment, talent, sustainability, place, and diversity. And their statistical analysis places us at performing among the top ten counties in the United States with a population between one hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and ninety-nine ninety-nine nine thousand people. So I wanted to share that with you. One of the things that they note in their communication to us is one of the compelling reasons why we're on the list is because of the investment we've made in the broadband express fiber ring infrastructure in the county. So congratulations to you and to our technology services staff and our business and community services staff for the fine work they've done to be recognized for that. And then the other thing I wanted to share with you was a communication I received this morning. It is a thank you from Mr. Bill Monahan, the city manager of the city of Milwaukee, and wanting me to share his thanks and appreciation with you all for the participation and contribution that Clackamas County North, our North Clackamas County Parks and Recreation District has made in participating in what will be improvements to the trolley trail crossing at Twenty-Second and McLaughlin there. It's where there's a rather difficult configuration of a number of things coming together and we have collaborated with the city of Milwaukee, Trimate and ODT and come up with what we think is a really good fix for that particular crossing of the trail. And Milwaukee is quite appreciative of our partnership in that. Wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Commission, communication, I'll start with Commissioner Savis.
Okay, well, today I wanted to talk a little bit about, and I spoke about this last week, about advantages and maybe sometimes disadvantage as far as regional efforts and have been working together, other jurisdictions working together. And last week I talked about the sewer thing. I think I forgot to mention that there was about three hundred million dollars in a two thousand eight study that we had done, about three hundred million dollars savings by working together amongst the, the two sewer districts in the county. Potential savings if we continue to work together on, at the metro level with regards to transportation and land use. I think that there's obviously potential savings, but I think it's also whether it's sewer or land use or transportation that we all treat each other fairly and there's equity in that. And that's something I will continue to advocate for in as, as reasonable a way as possible. And I think it's up to us to communicate cooperatively, regionally, that we will be good partners, but we expect to be treated fairly. And I think that is a very fundamental thing that we need to convey. And I, I know that we have difficult, we're at a point in time where both of those venues are somewhat challenged at times because communications can, going back and forth can somehow render maybe a negative aspect, but I, as well as, you know, a lot of good positive intent. So I think we all want to strive to do our best for our constituents and we have to recognize that we have to treat each other fairly when it comes to distribution of funds or efforts or land use, inclusions, non-inclusions, in all of the, all of those aspects. And, you know, I think it helps to be a squeaky wheel, but I think we have to do it in a way that's professional and I think that's where the challenges typically lie. So that's what I have for today.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
I hope that somebody does mention that picking marijuana for, for kids underage should not be allowed. You know, I don't think any of us think of the folks who want medical marijuana, even recreational marijuana as bad people. Our concern, or terrible, horrible people is what somebody said. Our concern is that can we manage the impact? The thing that, again, drives me crazy is, you know, we look at everything in, like this, like, you know, marijuana, can we make some money off of it? You know, and alcohol, can we make some money off of it? Gambling, can we make some money off of it? You know, there's not much less, left out there to tax.
Tobacco.
Well, we tax, yeah, tobacco, all those things. So can we make some money out of it? And I won't tell you what one of those things are that we could tax, that I hope we don't ever get to that one, but I, I don't think we should look at this thing as a money generator. You know, we could have just legalized marijuana and not done all this and probably solved the black market issue and a lot of the crime issues. We address it through enforcement, but even that's difficult. So I know people have to go, so I just want to mention that, you know, we have a lot of great industries in this county and we had an opportunity to tour Biotronics, which is in Lake Oswego. I'll bet you most people doesn't, don't even know it exists. Very neat place. John, you were unable to go, go. It's quite impressive. And, and what they wanted to really tell us is, when we asked, how can we help you? Well, let people know that, and they told us, let people know that we're here. We are providing a great service. They make pacemakers and other various items that are planted in your body. So it's not like they have a huge failure rate. You know, they have a zero failure rate. But they do an amazing job. It's a lot of robots, but there's still four hundred or so people work at this company and what was probably an, an old warehouse is now a manufacturing center, a think tank. It's just amazing. So I think Biotronics, which is a subsidiary of, do you remember?
Microsystems Engineering.
Microsystems Engineering.
Okay, amazing place and I want to thank them for being here. And, you know, they're, most of their, their employees in that process are like PhDs and all this, but they also hire a lot of people out of our community colleges. So we need to focus our training on, on these kind of facilities. By the way, it, it's, if you, you could call this an industry. This is a manufacturing, but what do they let out, the smoke stacks? Nothing. They are manufacturing, and this is the future of our manufacturing, is that this is in a neighborhood. You wouldn't even know it was there if somebody didn't drive you by it. And so thank you to Biotronics for staying in Clackamas County.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I also went on that tour. It was actually phenomenal, a lot of robotics and a lot of highly trained people who actually have good, solid ping jobs in this county. And I thought that was pretty, pretty significant. A few things that happened this week. Commissioner Smith and myself met with Louis Laund-, Laundrie of the Army Corps of Engineers. We are working on getting the locks reopened here. The other piece that we still keep working on is actually the Blue Heron site as well. And I will say that we did, we did get that whole area designated as a state heritage area and we are now working to make sure that, and sent a bill, I know that Commissioner Smith testified down in Salem, to actually get it designated as a national heritage area and it would be one of the first national heritage areas on the West Coast. So we're working on that with our congressional delegation. Then actually, we had a business visit with the city of Estacada. Actually, I'll be doing that this afternoon, but we also had an opportunity to go there for our city's dinner. And so I'm heading out back there this afternoon to go ahead and do that. Commissioner Bernard and I attended our Clackamas County Audit Committee meeting as well as our Veterans Advisory Committee meeting at the Audit Committee. Good discussions about how we make sure our budgets are transparent and accountable and how we are meeting all the appropriate government standards to make sure that we are accountable and transparent. So we'll continue to do that. At the Veterans Advisory Committee, I know that Commissioner Bernard mentioned the visit, I believe, this summer from the wall, from Vietnam Wall. And what date is that, Commissioner, that they're coming out?
July twelfth, I believe.
July twelfth. And we also continue to work on a community covenant for veterans, which will help guide, I hope, my interest in housing policies for veterans. So with that, Chair, I've got lots of other things I could talk about, but it's getting late, so.
I'll drop some of mine off, off as well. First of all, Mary, why don't you go ahead and show the slide on our town halls? And there they are. So again, this year, we decided to make these specific, i.e. kind of countywide, but held at different locations. The first one's coming up on April twenty-first, Grow a Vibrant Economy will be the topic and it'll be at Stafford. You can see the address there, or I should say the location. Athie Middle Creek School is actually on Borland Road, Stafford exit I two oh five, turn left at Borland. A second one, Build a Strong Infrastructure, that's in Milwaukee. Ensure Safe and Healthy Communities in Canby and Find that's in Milwaukee. Ensure Safe and Healthy Communities in Camby. And finally, honor, utilize, promote and invest in our natural resources, and that will be appropriately in Welch's. This week, pursuant to what Martha was talking about, we had a quarterly budget committee meeting, C4 Metro Subcommittee this morning. And next week, we have an opportunity to view another one of our outstanding businesses, the Fred Meyer Distribution Center. It is giant too and very automated. We have a meeting with Metro and a lot of our cities in our shared region. Metro's convening that. There'll be a Clackamas County Business Association meeting. I want to take a super genius tour. This is one of our key clusters is development of software for ga- the gaming industry. And don't forget, for anybody who's not been there, A Bite of Mount Hood is coming up. And it's an outstanding event with super great food. I will warn you, if you want to go up there, you better get there early to get a table. Otherwise, you're eaten out of a plate while standing. We decided to invest $1,000, donate it to the Veterans Wall. The Veterans Wall will be coming, what's the date, Jim? June?
I believe it's July 11th.
Yeah. Look for it, it'll be Milwaukee. So you, there'll be, there'll be a lot of fanfare about this. It's a very solemn wall, a very important wall, especially to us. We're in the generation of the Vietnam War. We voted also, now, for those of you who wonder, you know, there is some business here at the business meeting, but where we take policy actions, a lot of them, almost machine gun like, is on Tuesdays. We do a lot of deciding of things on Tuesdays, so it's rapid action. If you want to listen in on that, you'll can find out about such things as, that we voted four zero to support up to a $50,000 contribution towards lobbying for the Willamette Falls locks, similar to what Commissioner Schrader was talking about. The, and the county parks, we made some decisions three to one to, to impose some different fines there. The, we took a lot, made a lot of decisions on a lot of things I should emphasize, and I'll just ask you to look at those and, and or look at the minutes if you want to do a shortened version rather than listening to the tapes themselves. We did talk about road maintenance funding. It is my desire that we address this in November with the voters. But in order to do that, you've got to back up quite a few months in order to get everything in order. We, we still have some funding options. And it looks like at least the last leanings of this commission was, were to put two ideas out to the voters to see what their, their comments would, of that would be. And also, finally, my Clackamas County unsung heroes, that would be, this week, Abigail Wells. She's an MA in a CPS for Vibrant Future Coalition Coordinator of Northwest Family Services. Abby has worked with the Public Health Division to incorporate healthy communities and tobacco prevention into Youth Photo Voice, an empowerment project for youth to learn about their environment through a camera lens. In 2013, photographed images of healthy communities were featured in the lobby of, of the PB, PSB, Public Service Building, during Public Health Week. And they were outstanding and very unusual. A few of these enlarged photos continue to be displayed publicly in Suite 367. In 2014, students photographed alcohol and tobacco advertisements in their community and transformed those negative influences into positive messages. Abby's tireless collaboration makes this opportunity possible. So congratulations to Abby. And finally, ladies and gentlemen, Happy Easter. It's coming up. I hope you have a great egg hunt and don't overeat the chocolate. And there being no further business before the commission this day, this meeting is adjourned.